Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 20th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. As always, please take a moment to take a look at your phones and make sure they're on silent or vibrate. And when you're done with that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Hatfield, roll, please.
Yes. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rausch.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Ringgold.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll move this to item two, the consent agenda. We have item 2.1 is the approval of the minutes from January 9th, 2023. 2.2 is a list of staff that have announced resignations as well as effective dates. Item 2.3 is approval of the school system bills for the month of December in the amount of $13,677,755. And item 2.4 is approval to pay, to operate legal payments to the true law firm in the amount of $3,040. Those are broken down immediately below that amount. I will accept the motion for the consent agenda at this time.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Support?
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Rausch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to item 3.1, shining stars. Mr. Sherrill.
I forgot to light myself up, so, as always, our shining stars get to come up and stand with me for an awkward moment, and so I need two of you at this time. We have Mackenzie Maori and Mrs. Rankie, if you guys would join me. And we're going to read a little bit about you while you stand up here, so that's why it's so uncomfortable for a while, we talked about, okay? Mackenzie's MPS journey began in 2021 when she was hired as associate teacher in the three-year-old preschool class at Carpenter Pre-Primary School where she presently employed. Mackenzie earned her associates and applied arts degree in child development from Oakland Community College. Mackenzie was nominated for a shining star by MPS parents. Among their comments were the following: "Miss Maori has been phenomenal. My daughter's experience in her class has been such a great foundation for her education, and let's not forget the love that Mrs. Maori has for each of her students. I get to witness drop-off each morning, and I'm so grateful that I have a job that allows it, because I firsthand get to see how excited all these students are to see Miss Maori each day. You can tell the children are cared for by how excited they are to return the next day." And I'm going to go right on and read about Carrie since they're kind of connected to you guys. Carrie joined the MPS team in 2019 as an associate teacher at the Carpenter Pre-Primary Center. She was then hired as the lead teacher in the three-year-old preschool class at Carpenter Pre-Primary Center in 2021. Carrie earned her associates and applied arts degree in child development from Delta College. Carrie was nominated for a shining star by MPS parents. Mrs. Rankie has been phenomenal. We can only say positive things about my child's year, and I attribute that to her as a teacher in the school she attends. The weekly newsletter and daily app updates what Miss Rankie gives us as to what our daughter is learning each day and allows us to have conversations with her later in the evening and learn about the day through her voice. The procedures and expectations that Miss Rankie has for her class are something I believe all preschool classes should strive for. You can tell that she is setting up individual students for success. Congratulations, guys. You guys pass those out and get one of these, and you get to go shake all the boys in your hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can tell they're preschool teachers, right?
Thank you.
And our next shining stars, Rebecca Longstrife. Becky's here somewhere. So Becky's MPS journey began in 2008 when she started her employment as administrative assistants for the information technology department, a position that she held for 12 years before accepting her current position of enrollment specialist and McKinney-Vento specialist. Becky attended Central Michigan University where she graduated in 2006 with a bachelor of science degree in business administration with a focus on accounting. Becky was nominated for a shining star by her MPS colleagues. Among their comments were the following: "In her role as the enrollment and McKinney-Vento specialist, Becky communicates with a wide variety of the stakeholders on a daily basis. She communicates with professionalism, empathy, and an eye towards improving customer relations. Becky's effective ability to communicate with all MPS schools, in addition to leading with empathy, have made her indispensable to the stability of the MPS district. She is organized and she is a problem solver, but most importantly, she is kind, caring, and works to assist all students to achieve the best educational experience with MPS." Congratulations, Becky. We get to do the same thing. Yep. Thank you.
That'll move us on to item 3.2, an MPS data update presented by Penny Miller-Nelson and Mary Chilton. Penny?
Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to have Mary Chilton with me tonight. If you have not had a chance to meet Mary, she works behind the scenes here as our data and assessment specialist. She is one of those unsung heroes. If you ask any principal what they think about Mary, they will rate her a 10 out of 10 because she does all of our assessment coordination for all of our state and local assessments, and then she is our data guru. She has the ability to gather all of our reports and compile our data in ways that we can make meaning of it and work with our teams. So we're tag-teaming tonight, and I've already told Mary that I'm sure Mike will chime in periodically when he has thoughts and ideas that he wants to share with us. So to frame our discussion tonight, I'll just start by saying there certainly has been ongoing media coverage about the impact that the pandemic has had on student learning and proficiency. And while the phrase "learning loss" seems to have stuck in the media, we really believe that a better frame of thinking for this is to think about how students have lost opportunity to learn. It's not that they've lost things they've learned, they just lost some opportunity during those brief periods of virtual learning, and then certainly when students were quarantined was something that was out of our control as individuals fell ill or were close contacts. So we know that it was a varied experience, but overall, you're going to see tonight through the data presentation that our students really fared well, and as a district, we fared better than most when it comes to looking at student proficiency and growth. So I share that just as a frame for thinking tonight, and I also just want to share that Mary and I have been out working with principals and building teams on an individual school level, and in our experience, these presentations often generate more questions. So we welcome that at the end of our presentation and just ask for your grace, knowing that we don't have all the numbers and facts and figures memorized in our heads, so if we don't know something that you ask, we certainly will commit to getting back to you on that. As another frame of thinking for our conversation tonight, I just want to remind you that what we're sharing is summative data. It's the Michigan MERA exam data, the Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress, or MSTEP, its PSAT data, which is the preliminary SAT, and its SAT data. And this includes assessments in English Language Arts, ELA, and mathematics for grades 3, 11, and social studies and science for grades 5, 8, 11. Mary has done a nice job of labeling all the slides, and we can remind you of that as we proceed. This slide really represents what a comprehensive and balanced assessment system should look like in a school. We know we're living into this vision, and we're not quite there yet with the totality of this, but I share this because I want you to see at the tip of that inverted pyramid is really what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about summative assessment, and it is a portion of the bigger picture for us. It's important. It is the most public measure of student success. It is the most public measure of the success of our district and how we are compared to other districts. But we want you to know that there is a lot of intentional work happening, teachers in classrooms in that purple area where they're formatively assessing on the regular to know what students need next and how to adjust their instruction, and we have district-level and school-level assessments that we're using today. At our curriculum committee meeting, we took a look at our benchmark assessment data for the winter assessment period. So it's a bigger picture, it's a deeper picture than what you're seeing tonight, and just wanted to remind you that this is one piece of the bigger puzzle. You'll also notice that, as Mary shares these slides, there are a series of comparison slides. The state uses comparison as one way to help tell a story of where your district or your school is achieving, and they've developed comparison groups based on demographic information or based on local school data. And it's important for us, we care about that, but again, we're trying to think of ourselves really being in competition with the last best version of Midland Public Schools, and so I ask you to keep that in mind. We want to continually improve and grow in comparison to where we were each and every year for each and every student. So Mary, I'll turn this over to you to talk us through this next series of slides. Is this one? It is.
Okay, so we're going to look at a lot of different comparisons. We're going to start off, we're going to look at our percent proficient, and it's going to compare our district against the state. So we're going to start with ELA, and in this graph, Midland Public Schools is the blue, and it goes from grades three down to 11. I thought I could see the screen better than I can.
Here, I'll be sure I know.
That's okay. And the gray bar on the left is the state, and when you look at it, you can see that Midland Public Schools outperforms the state at every grade level in ELA, and that as you go to the higher grades, the proficiency gap increases. Here's mathematics, same story. Midland Public Schools in the blue again, outperforms the state at every grade level. And you can see in fifth and sixth grade, both the state and the district kind of drop, and then Midland Public Schools comes back in the seventh grade, starts increasing, so... Here's the science. Again, Midland Public Schools outperforms the state in every grade level, but there is a big drop-off in the 11th grade testing. Social studies, again, we outperform the state at every grade level, and the gap drastically increases in the higher grades. Okay, so next, we're going to look at comparing our district to other districts as a group that are in our area, in the tri-city area. And this information came from my school data, and they choose the districts that are your comparison group. And in these slides, all the grades are combined, so you'll get like one ELA. They take all the ELA and crunch them into one comparison. So in this, you can see again, Midland Public Schools is in the blue, and there's two years of data, 21 and 22. We normally would have three years of data, but there was no testing in 2020. The state is in the gray, and then the area districts are in the red. And in these slides, you're going to see that the area districts and the state are very close in all content areas. There's mathematics. Another thing you notice, you'll see where if Midland trends, Midland and the state and the area districts usually trend in the same direction, with Midland outperforming, of course. You see that again in science. And social studies. So next, we are going to take a look at schools that actually look like us, that would have similar demographics to us. And again, this comparison group comes from my school data. So the similar characteristics, they use these four characteristics: the number of students enrolled, student-teacher ratio, percentage of low socioeconomic students, and the amount of money the school spends per student. So I think there's up to 30 school districts that we would compare ourselves to across the state, and they could be anywhere in the state. So the first one is English Language Arts, and to understand this graph, Midland Public Schools is in the blue, they're behind, and then the comparison district is in the gray bar, and then that red dash line is where the state is. So what you see is MPS outperforming not only the state but schools that have similar characteristics to Midland Public Schools. Math, same story, outperforming both the similar characteristic schools in the state. And science. And social studies, you see the comparison districts basically mimicking the state, and then Midland Public Schools outperforming. Okay. So now we're going to compare, we've compared ourselves to the state, to the area districts, and then to similar districts, and now we're going to compare ourselves to what we call the elite comparison group, and it's the average proficiency. Again, it's all grades combined. Did you want to talk about the...
No, keep going.
I'll keep going. Okay. All right. So this group was, this isn't anything from my school data, this is what Midland Public Schools chooses. We chose this group, I don't know, about 20 years ago, and it was a group of all the districts in the state that are similar in size, larger districts, that consistently outperform MPS in every content area and every grade. How do we compare against the elite schools in the state?
I'll just say, we're sensitive when we look at student group demographic information like this. We are sharing this because we know it matters when a district has a higher percentage of students receiving services through an IEP. It requires more effort, time, support, service from the district. Similarly, students who are experiencing poverty or near-poverty conditions typically require additional service and support. They're navigating challenges that outside of school and even outside of the home, they often require more support. We are not sharing this demographic information in a way that's meant to be an excuse, it's meant to paint a clear and crisp picture of how we stack up against these other districts, and we know that each and every one of these students, whether they are in a demographic group and have that identified label, that we still have an obligation and a responsibility to meet their needs. So I just, I want to be clear about that and the fact that we continue to believe that every student can achieve, and we continue to believe that every teacher we have in our classrooms have the skill, ability, and will to meet the needs of those students.
Okay. So the graph on the left is the students with disabilities. Midland Public Schools is at the top, 14.8%. The state is at the bottom, 13.5. And then the elite comparison group, their combined students with disability is, is it 10.4?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we do have slightly higher students with IEP population. And the graph on the left is our low socioeconomic status data. And Midland Public Schools at the top, 35.9%, low socioeconomic, where the state is at 51.7, and you can see the group we're comparing ourselves to is at 13.8%. So we're about two and a half times the rate of economically disadvantaged compared to the elite comparison group. Okay. So here is our English Language Arts, and it would be grades three through eight and 11. Again, Midland Public Schools is in the blue, and the elite comparison group is in the gray, and the state is in the red. And we already know we outperform the state. So you can see that the elite comparison group outperformed us at every grade, but you can see by 11th grade, the gap is significantly narrowed.
I think that's a real point of celebration for us, to know that the longer you're with us, you know, it just keeps getting better and better, and again, a testament to the teachers we have in classrooms who are working real intentionally when you consider the demographic information we just shared.
And here we are with mathematics, similar story, maybe larger gaps, especially there in the middle. One thing that's interesting is you'll notice that the elite comparison group, the state and the district, we all follow like the same pattern. We take dips in the same place and come up at the same place. And again, by 11th grade, the gap has narrowed compared to the earlier grades. Here we are with science. Interestingly, by 11th grade, the state actually went up a little bit in 11th grade, and both the district and elite comparison group went down, but the gap is pretty significant in 11th grade between us and the elite comparison group. Social studies, you know, I would just say by 11th grade, it's pretty impressive that they have surpassed the elite comparison group by a significant amount. Okay, so now we are going to look at demographic-based student group percent proficient. It's Midland Public Schools compared to the elite comparison group, and we're going to look at our demographic groups, but we're only looking at the 11th grade. We could do hundreds of slides if we did every grade in every content area. So here's grade 11, English Language Arts, and this is the low socioeconomic status, and you can see that in all of these slides, the elite comparison group does have higher proficiency levels, the state has the lowest, and Midland Public Schools is pretty well approaching the elite comparison group in some of these. Here it is in mathematics, low socioeconomic, maybe a higher gap between us and the elite comparison group than it was in English Language Arts. And this is grade 11, students with disabilities, and Midland Public Schools is really just, what, 1.4% off from the elite comparison group and substantially greater than the And here is 11th grade mathematics, the students with disabilities, and again, a bigger gap. We do find the bigger gaps in mathematics. Now we're going to look at multi-year comparisons. This is just comparing us basically against ourselves year to year. The yellow line is the state, the gray bars are Midland Public Schools, and the dashed line is the trend line. These graphs show seven years of data, starting in 2016. These are all the years we've had MSTEP. Prior to that was MEEP in fall of 2014, so these represent all the MSTEP years. So it's a fair comparison test to test in that regard. And you can see that the trend lines, you're going to notice, are pretty flat over seven years. One thing we want to take a look at is that gap in 2020 where there was no testing. In 2021, the first year after the pandemic, any student who did not test in the state of Michigan was automatically exempted for COVID. Consequently, the state of Michigan tested, you know, between 60 and 70% of the students statewide. Midland Public Schools, depending on the grade and the content area and the building and stuff, we tested anywhere from the high 80s to even above 95%. So we did very well testing the majority of our kids. Every kid we could test, we did. So because of that, the results for the state of Michigan might look higher than they otherwise would have because they didn't test all of their kids in 2021. That's why sometimes in the state, you'll see them drop off more in 2022 because that's a more accurate number.
We'll click through these next slides rather quickly. We did just a sampling, as you can see, grades four, seven, 11, maybe there's a grade five or eight in there just for a mix. As Mary said, the story we're trying to tell as we continue to click through these slides is that although we are a high-achieving district, we're a fairly stable, even flat system. So we also continue to remind principals, teachers, and others who work with these data sets that these are the patterns and trends that matter. One year of a peak or one year of a dip doesn't mean we should overreact, it's really the progression over time. So our takeaway as we continue to click through these set of slides is we're high-achieving, but it's stable and flat. All right, on to growth.
Yeah, we're going to look at a different measurement now. We're going to look at growth. Student growth percentiles, that is, we also call them SGP's. That's one way the Department of Ed measures student growth across the state. Okay, so we're comparing the year 2022, but what year do we compare it to? We can't compare it to 2021 because the state didn't test 100% of the students. 2020, we can't compare it to because there was no testing. So for the purposes of growth, they're going back three years, basically. We're comparing 2022 scores to 2019 scores. And so this is how they determine the SGP's. First, the Department of Ed goes back to the 2019 test data, and then the students across Michigan with the same scale score are grouped into cohorts. They call them their academic peers. So you have all these different cohorts according to scale score. Then the MDE finds how each individual in a cohort of academic peers performed in 2022, and then they take those scores and arrange them into percentile rankings, and that's how you get your ranking. It's a little, you have to really think through it in a way because it's not intuitive, I guess, as far as understanding it.
So just for clarification.
Sure.
Are we saying that we're taking a kid that was in seventh grade in 2019 and comparing them to where they're at as a 10th grader in terms of growth?
Yes. Yes. So in the seventh grade, based on their scale score, they would have been grouped in a cohort.
So if they're in the 25th percentile in seventh grade, were they still in the 25th percentile in 10th?
They don't go by the percentile, they go by what their scale score was.
Their raw scale score.
Okay.
And then that group moves forward three years in this situation, and that's who they're comparing against.
And they sort out those scale scores.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's some flaws in this, given, you know, the COVID years without testing, so it is what it is at this point.
Yeah, normally you go back one year, although, you know, in science and social studies, you always go back three years, I guess. So the purpose of SGP's, they said, was leveling the playing field. The idea is that low-performing students do have the potential for high growth when they are compared to their academic peers, so it gives them an opportunity for success, I guess. Students who exhibit consistently high growth will eventually be able to meet the benchmarks. That's the idea of the student growth percentile. You may be a low achiever, but if you have high growth and you keep having high growth, you'll eventually become a high achiever.
Remembering that 11th grade college and career-ready standards is sort of that terminal measurement for us.
Some things to note, there are no science growth scores because 2019 was a pilot year, so they didn't provide any comparison data. There is no elementary growth scores because the students who were in elementary in 2019 are now in middle school, so you can't get an elementary growth score. And there is no ninth or 10th grade growth score because although they are required, we are required to test our ninth and 10th graders, there's no accountability implications if you don't, I guess. So they don't provide growth scores. They said for a long time they would start doing it, but they haven't done that yet. Okay, so here is where you take the growth scores, basically for ELA, we took them for all the grades and mushed them down. So there's ELA, math, and social studies. The gray circle is the state's average student growth percentile. The blue is Midland Public Schools' average growth percentile for each of those content areas, and the little red dot is the elite comparison group's average student growth percentile. So when you look at that, you can see that Midland Public Schools and the elite comparison group really have very, very similar student growth percentiles and much, much higher than the state of Michigan. Okay.
We just have all these ways to look at data. We're nearing the end, yes.
So the scatter plot is divided into quadrants, and when you go from left to right, there's where you're increasing in proficiency, and when you go from bottom to top, you're increasing in growth. So what you want to see on this chart is each of those dots represent a student. These are... These are our eighth-grade students in English. They take the PSAT 8. You want to see the bulk of your dots in the upper right-hand corner because then that means those students are high-performing and high-growth. Where in the lower left-hand quadrant, those would be low-performing, low-growth students.
So there are three more slides of scatter plots, again, just looking at this as a representation of the kind of data that we're using when we talk with principals and teacher teams, you know, however you can help them visualize data in ways that can make meaning.
That's 11th grade ELA, eighth-grade math, and 11th grade math.
Right.
Points of pride. Okay. So for this, I took, this is the MME score, so there are 11th grade scores. It's the SAT, the evidence-based reading and writing for ELA, the math, and then M-Step Science and Social Studies. And instead of doing, you know, what your percent proficient is, we took what our average scale score is as a district and compared it, where did we fall in the state. And for ELA, we are in the top 4%. In math, we were in the top 5%. Science, top 5%, and social studies in the top 2%.
So that's the overview of our data set. We want you to know that as we continue to move forward, we're going to continue to focus on student growth and accelerating learning, focusing again on that potential for each and every student to be successful. We're going to continue providing strong, standards-aligned learning experiences in each grade level and each course. MDE is continuing to come out with resources that promote acceleration over remediation, encouraging us to keep students at grade-level content and to spiral back to content standards or concepts that maybe they missed and teach them at the current grade level in the context of that new learning, and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to hold students to high expectations. There is no room here to allow students to not have the supports in order to meet high expectations and to continue to message to students and families that we expect all students to be successful and we're prepared to help them do that. We will continue to monitor and be responsive with supports and interventions. You've heard Brian and I and Kim Funnel in previous presentations talk about how we're using our supplemental grant funds to really target supports. We're going to continue to monitor those and keep a pulse on what's needed, abandon things that aren't working, and bring in new ways of working if that's what's needed. And we're going to continue, back to that second slide, a comprehensive and balanced assessment system. We're going to continue to build out that structure so that we have actionable data. You know, the data we shared tonight, again, as summative, is helpful. It tells part of our story, but it is not as actionable as the data that teachers are gathering on the daily about students and the data that we can, and information we can glean from district-level assessments. So that's what we have for you this evening. What questions might you have for us?
I've got a few.
Okay.
If I understood what the numbers mean, we're better than the surrounding districts?
Absolutely.
And we are better than the state average?
Absolutely.
We hold our own with the elite comparison group?
We do.
Problem is, there are still a lot of numbers that are in the 50s and 60s.
Yes.
Even when you look at the, I thought I saw 58 at one point for third-grade ELA proficiency. I saw 53, 58. I'm kind of confused. But even the elite comparison group numbers aren't all that impressive, which tells me the standards may be, what are we being measured against? Are we being measured against attainable standards? Because if everybody's in the 50%, that's...
You want to go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, only because I've become the historian, I guess, right? I hate to say it that way, but so about every decade in my career, a new assessment with new proficiency levels get created. And so all of you sitting at the table, if you were back in these days taking these levels, you would say this would have been probably below the proficiency mark because you weren't prepared for what these kids to do today. And so I would say with the pandemic, this assessment, this proficiency may be around for a while because the state has obviously not mastered that yet. But as we begin to creep up, the tendency will be a new assessment, new proficiency, because it's stretching. We want to continue to stretch our kids. And so the test was put in in 16, I think, Mary?
Yes.
And then by 19, we were kind of 20, we were shut down by the state, and so you don't really have much comparable data, and now we're getting back at it, trying to do recovery from the loss, and then growth again. So you're right, John, the state, ourselves, even though we're in the top 5%, we've always been at least in the top 10. That's good, but do we have growth? Absolutely. And our problem, or if you're assessing your health, assessing our health, is that we've been a flat district for four or five years in a row, and so we need to work on the growth. Hence, the dollars, the interventions that we are now putting in place and using data, and specific data that Fannie was talking about, to focus in the classroom and go forward.
So if we contextualize this a bit of a different way, tell me if this is wrong. When I think of like the SAT, we're all familiar with, 1600 is the perfect score. Most everybody in this room would not get a 1600, and the test is specifically designed that way, to have this bell curve of distribution.
I would say that's fair. Brian and Penny are more the mathematicians to this point than me, but I would say that's a fair comparison, huh, guys?
So when we're looking at proficiency data, we're looking at where the bell curve is compared to peer comparison groups. Then when we look at the growth data, we're trying to understand if that student moved within the bell curve each year.
Yeah, the growth really tells us the trajectory of the student moving forward to attain proficiency in 11th grade. And I would say yes to what you said, and, but, the state tells us that the assessments they issue are aligned to state standards. And we don't always have access to all of the assessment questions to go back and really examine that for ourselves. So we're trusting that the standards are attainable through the kind of, and that they're creating assessment questions that are equitable for all students across the state and that are actually reasonable questions aligned at the standards. And, I mean, I don't know how else to say it other than we have to trust that, but they are in continual review. The science assessment is actually an interesting example because it's new, and you saw that we had an interesting trajectory there because part of it is also us understanding and students understanding what the assessment, the nature of the assessment is. So those new standards came down from the state following the next-generation science standards, along with the engineering and discipline practices. And the test was very different than what students had experienced in the past. So there is skill in knowing how to take an assessment, and that's something that we need to address as well.
And growth still may be our alignment to that new.
Yeah.
Because there's probably, we're probably not fully aligned in what we're teaching in the classroom.
I think we would be remiss if we didn't let the public know that, look, these standards are exactly what Phil described. 100% is really not attainable. And because when the parents call and say, yeah, only 53% of the third graders in the Midland Public Schools are proficient according to state standards, that sounds like we're doing a terrible job. We're not.
We're not. We're doing a good job.
But that statistic, these numbers look really bad.
Yes.
And Lansing has imposed that on us. I'd love to have the phone number where I can send the parent to call with questions about why the standards are going to happen. If you could give me that.
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Rice, but he probably won't answer, just so you know.
I'd love to pass that on.
Yeah, I'll also say, John, it's part of...
It puts us in a really bad spot.
Right. It's part of why, and maybe I could have been more explicit in the beginning when I was framing it, as I prefer to think of us in competition with the last best version of us. Because, yes, we want to be competitive with those elite comparison schools, but really, we're working to make sure that every single student is reaching their full potential. And I'm going way off script here, so Mike will probably give me the look.
You're going right, I like it.
But, you know, this is one measure of student success, and I hope in the future we can have conversations about what does student success mean for us in Midland Public Schools? An assessment score is one piece. There are a lot of other skills, characteristics, attributes that we also care about in what a graduate, a profile of a graduate could look like. So your point's well taken.
And student growth percentages is fairly new, and we don't have great data because of that.
Yeah.
But I would tell you, as educators, we buy into that more than we do a standardized TUT score. But we also, where Penny's going is, you see it, standardized testing has kind of been failed, and so you're starting to see proficiency-based, project-based, hands-on experience because we know that's what the real world is requiring. And so I think it'll be the balance of the two as you go forward on some of that as well.
And to John's point, that's why it's important to look at data a lot of different ways. Because if you just look at like a straight percentage, it doesn't tell you the story.
Right. Unfortunately, the public that we serve only gets a little snapshot, and it's a percentage that gets printed in the newspaper.
Correct.
And it's hard to explain.
Yes.
So I think we need to message this better.
I think parents who get NWA...
Not you, us.
All of us.
Oh, yeah.
I think the parents who get, particularly at the lower-grade levels, who get the NWA assessments helps them specifically because they're seeing what we like is where do they stand and where are they growing? And so...
I wasn't being critical of your presentation, by the way.
We got you. We're in it with you. We're all in this together.
Well, this piece is somewhat compliance-based, too. This is the stuff we're required to present to you, so.
What other questions do you have?
So Mike, expand on that just a little bit more for the public, especially parents. The green dots that we saw on the last four slides are all individual students in our district, correct?
Correct.
And how the parent, us as parents, we get that NWEA test result. And do you guys want to talk about what your expectations of parents are when you receive that?
Sure. I'll start, and Mary, you chime in if you have anything to add, or anyone here on the team.
Well, first of all, NWA's been around for quite a long time, so happened to be, not that I did it, but my boss in August was one of the first districts in the state of Michigan to use NWA. Problem was 20 years ago. But it's grown to the point that it's used throughout the country. It's probably the number-one assessment tool because we all believe in it. And there's three times a year, which versus a one-time-a-year snapshot as well. So the data is very accurate, very good for teachers to work with your student behind the scene and grow them and know their needs as well.
Yeah, that was probably...
But you guys, there's more expertise on that.
That was a great summary. I'll just add to that. It certainly gives you what their current RIT score is, and it gives you where they are in terms of growth in a percentile ranking. So as a parent, it can paint a picture of, okay, maybe my child isn't exactly where they need to be in terms of that RIT score, but they're growing, and that's a very hopeful, promising perspective. It also can give you details about where the student needs to focus more time, energy, and effort. And the magic comes when the teacher and the student and the parent are in sync on that, whether it's through a parent-teacher family conference or just ongoing communication, and knowing that we have interventions and resources and tools that families can use with their children as well. So it works best when we're all in step with one another.
And the expectation is that the teacher is addressing these issues with each parent?
Yeah, that's what we're, so by statute, we have to send a family report home, and we are trying to do better in messaging how that family report can be used, and then trying to build those connections. And really, you know, students identifying where their growth edge is and putting a goal on paper is also a really wonderful strategy when it comes to NWEA. So we're trying to build sort of that, that frame of thinking, that the student knows, the teacher knows, the family, parent, guardian knows, and we're all working in the same direction.
Parent-teacher conference is a great spot for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, Brad?
Yeah, so along the same lines of what John was saying, how can we convey this? Or what are we going to put on our webpage to promote ourselves? What can, I don't know if you want to put all 30 slides on the webpage?
Well, the board goes on, the presentation goes on.
Right.
There, we've done some of this in the past at PIC meetings. We'll do that again and record it. We certainly can do something to communique. Our problem, as you know, is we like acronyms and we like information that parents don't. And so ironically, the three of these just got an article that I pulled about writing in a style that parents understand. And so, hate to say this, but it's pretty low-level for you to understand some of that. So sometimes we're terrible about using all of that lingo. So we got to break this down where the average person would understand it, I guess. I don't know, but that's going to be the key.
Okay.
I mean, even if it's just math, top five and six.
Well, Penny went back to the slide, I think, for a reason.
Yeah.
And I talked about it. Is this the one we're going to set up there?
But at least it sounds pretty clear.
If we had to break it all down, this is what we want you to focus on.
Yes.
Yeah, it may not be perfect, but I want you to know that we're...
To Brad's question, that's your hood ornament right there.
Right.
Yeah.
We use our, oh, Mike, I'm forgetting the name of the publication that we do in partnership with Midland Daily News.
Our schools.
Our schools, thank you. And I know that oftentimes we will splash some of our data highlights in there. We certainly could use the communique in other ways, but it's sort of, out of context, like we need to add some context to it, you know, to John's point, to make a little more meaning, and we can work on that.
Yeah, because we usually just put in percent proficient and stuff, and they're saying you probably need a bigger, fuller picture.
We do it in our schools in the fall. If you remember, I think we kind of do MPS what we look like. But, and the idea of our schools, really, was, you know, 70% of our households don't have school-its children, so all you parents get that, but they don't. And so we do the our schools in the paper, hoping that households without children are staying in touch with MPS is doing.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, great discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the conversation.
All right, that will bring us to, I had a four request to address the board. I only have two names on my list tonight, so we'll start with those. And I know that a number of you came in after we began tonight, so I will give you an opportunity if you choose. But right now, we'll start with Amy Beasley.
I've got Kristy Plushkut.
Welcome, both.
Hello, it's Amy Sed. My name is Kristy Plushkut. I'm an MPS parent, as well as a volunteer with the Midland County Inclusion Alliance. Amy, do you want to...
Sure. Midland County Inclusion Alliance, if y'all are not aware, is a nonprofit that we began about end of 2018, early 2019, with the sole purpose of supporting inclusion and equity work here in our community and through the larger region. We have two councils, one is a business council in which we invite our business partners throughout the region to impact equity and inclusion through decisions they make as leaders in the business community. And then we also have our community council, which is comprised of a whole cross-section of folks throughout our community from all different parts and walks of life. Anyone who wants to serve is welcome to come be part of that work. And as part of the Inclusion Council community work, we have a Midland Public Schools committee, which is devoted to just supporting the work that y'all are already doing. So lots of great work has been going on with Deandre and the team here at MPS and our small but mighty team at the Inclusion Council. So we had some interesting things come up this fall that we've been working on, and I'll turn it over to Kristy to talk about that.
Yeah, so tonight, we're here to bring the board's attention to an issue facing a group of economically disadvantaged MPS students living in Section 8 subsidized housing but not receiving transportation to school. Their apartment complex, Charter Square, falls 1.3 miles from their school, and as you're aware, busing begins at 1.5 miles. Since we're limited to three minutes here, we can't really go into the numerous solutions we've kind of explored and exhausted, but we'd like to be able to continue this conversation with you to discuss how these students can receive equitable access to education. And it's on behalf of our Inclusion Council as well. We would just like to let you all know that we're available and willing to help with, helping support your equity efforts throughout the community.
Yeah, let us know how we can be helpful. I do want to just mention that the team has done a great job of really looking creatively at what all the options are, what the constraints are. It's very complicated and also very important. And so people just like Kristy, who have lots of skills and talents, are available to help support the efforts that y'all are already doing to increase equity across the school district. That's it. Thank you so much.
I had one quick question. So the distance that you're talking about, is that to Central Park?
It's to Adams Elementary.
To Adams, okay, excuse me.
So would it be Adams Northeast or Adams-Jefferson?
That's a great question.
It's a choice, split area, split when they go to middle school.
Yeah, I believe that group falls to Jefferson.
Majority goes to Jefferson.
Charter Square.
Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, this is one... Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, this is, this is one specific instance. I'm sure there are others that are little pockets of kids throughout the district. And I know that all of those are complex to solve, but this is just the one that we are, we're currently working on. And Deandre has reached out to all of the other buildings to see if there are similar situations. And it appears that this is a pretty unique situation. So it's going to, I think, require some unique thinking. Yep. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, Joe Bonadie's. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Greetings. I do not know if this talk is going to be reactive or proactive because I'm not sure where the situation is right now. In the Board of Education debate at the Midland Center for the Arts, Mr. Lauterbach said it was no secret that we will soon be selecting a new superintendent. At the board meeting, you, when you talked about the superintendent's new contract, you pushed his retirement funding up from September to July, and alluded to something soon but gave no year. In the January board meeting, Mr. Shero concluded his talks by calling himself a short timer. I will note that the HR committee has not had any mention of any superintendent's search activity in its minutes. So what scenarios might be happening? Mr. Shero will retire in 2024, in which case my comments will be proactive. Or Mr. Shero will retire this summer, and you're doing a search totally undercover, which is probably illegal. Or you have not started a search, which is negligent. I will make the assumption that you're going to use the Michigan Association of School Board, as you probably did previously. And I will remind you that the Michigan Association of School Boards has not distanced itself from the National Association of School Boards, like 26 other states, to repudiate the classification of domestic terrorists for the parents who speak at school board meetings. I would say that this position makes M A S B a left-wing organization. And if you use them, you are conducting a biased search for superintendent. I would propose that a parallel search with a more, or a more neutral search agency would be required to maintain equity in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, raise your hand. Please, floor's yours. Thank you for joining us. Would you mind giving us your name, please?
My name is Olivia Horn, and I attend Dow High School. I'm a junior. And I just wanted to bring up the gap between parents of color in this district and higher-up administrators. Recently, both myself and my brother were victims of racial injustice, which directly goes against the diversity, equity, and inclusion that is at the forefront of Midland Public Schools' mind. I think that creating some sort of way to bridge the gap between the two groups would prove helpful in all of this diversity that they are so heavily promoting. I know this is a very difficult change, considering it is something that has been woven into our culture so deeply, but I think it would be really largely welcome. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? Yes, ma'am. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Give me a minute. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna keep my mask on if you can hear me. I am Ayana Haynes. I know some of you guys know me. And we could talk all day on how we are growing and learning, and how each student can be successful. We could talk about our high expectations on assessment and standards. We can talk all day on how to be competitive with other school districts. I am grateful, very grateful, that I had three older children graduating from Midland Public Schools. However, I am disappointed. I am disappointed that I am standing here 11 years after my oldest son is bearing discrimination. And it's sad that we are at the same place today with other students. I am disappointed. What are we doing? How are we keeping our kids safe? Because our kids that look like me, they don't feel safe. As a mother, I'm very disappointed. I'm emotional because we can do better. We could do better. I challenge you guys to figure out how to keep our babies safe because they are not, they're not safe walking halls of MPS. A few weeks ago, my son was called a derogatory name. That's not easy for a mama. And I wish that didn't happen. So please, Midland Public Schools, let's do something. Let's do something. When will we change? When? When will you protect the all? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hello. To those who do not know me, my name is Adia Haynes. I'm a 2019 graduate of Midland Public Schools, and currently a graduating senior at Spelman College, computer science major. I do want to say that I'd be remiss if I did not mention how Midland Public Schools in this community has contributed greatly to my growth, and who I am as a person, and the character, who I am today, standing here. However, as my mom mentioned prior, I do have a lot of disappointments and very discouraging stories that I've heard in the past four weeks of me just being home before starting my full-time role. And I just ask that you, as adults and people who are very passionate about the education of the young children here, because I know that's why you are here today, really take a look at yourself and see what actionable things you can do to pour into children of color, to make them feel more safe in the halls of the schools, while on the court, while in the field. And just make sure that even the teachers and administration and people who, kids like me, who were looking up to these administrators, just make sure that everyone feels that Midland Public Schools is a place that they can come and be themselves, and also be supported, both mentally, emotionally, and physically. Because overall, although I did have a lot of different experiences here that were very contributed, they very much contributed to my growth, and I had to work through the adversity here in Midland Public Schools. Looking back, I realize how that did really enable me to become the person I am today. However, I don't want people like Olivia and other children of color to have to experience and go through that, and really question whether they are truly supported by the community that they also call home. And so I just ask that you all just take a step and just realize this is not a matter of politics. It's just a matter of being a human being and just wanting to thrive, and not have to survive in the color that you were born in. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you to everybody who did take time to come up and speak tonight. This brings us to item number five on our agenda, Curriculum Instruction Assessment. We have minutes dated January 16, 2023, which will be read by Ms. Baker.
Yes, we met on January 16, and we were here at the administration building. Our first topic was diversity, equity, and inclusion update. The Midland High Human Library event was a success. Dow High is scheduled for February, which we learned today will be in April instead. For the February Parent Information Committee meeting, the main topic will be diversity, equity, and inclusion update, including actions taken in relation to the equity audit. Next, we talked about the Life Skills Course Update. The Life Skills 101 Middle School course has proven successful this year, so the district will move forward in fall 2023 with implementing Life Skills 2001, which is the second course in that series. We next discussed the English Learner Program update. Kim Funnel provided an overview of the MPS English Learner Program, including the assessment process, student and program data, the services and supports provided to students, and the next steps for ongoing program improvement. And finally, the Grant Monitoring. The committee reviewed the process being used to monitor the implementation of state and federal grant-funded activities. The process includes regular documented check-ins with principals to discuss each activity, share success, collaboratively problem-solve challenges, and collect data to inform future decisions. And we met today, and those minutes will be forthcoming next month.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Moving on to item six, Finance, Facilities, and Operations. There are minutes that are going to be read by Mr. Lauterbach, dated February 6, 2023.
Thank you. The FFO committee met on February 6, 2023. We had some guests present, Kurt Yider, Mark Craig, Rich Jude, and Penny. We addressed the athletic facility capital campaigns. Kurt Yider, Mark Craig, and Rich Jude presented a potential capital improvement campaign for improvements to the baseball facilities at Dow High. Administration will meet again soon with a group representing Midland High with similar ambitions. We discussed the December financials. They were reviewed and expense variances were attributed to increased payroll expenses, order-proof stipend payouts, and the tax settlement with MCV. The March budget adjustment will include numerous revenue and expenditure modifications. We discussed the EnviroClean contract renewal. The administration will recommend extending the current service contract with EnviroClean for two years. We discussed administration campus paving. The administration will recommend award of a paving project for the administration center and the maintenance grounds and transportation campus. Masonry repair. The administration will recommend award of a masonry repair project at Jefferson Middle School. Paper order. The administration will recommend purchase of a semi-truck load of paper utilizing the RBMC bid consortium pricing. We discussed the Juul litigation. A potential settlement agreement is expected to be presented to the Board of Education in the next few months. We discussed the Series 3 bond sale. Series 3 of the 2015 bond initiative will be sold in March. The complete timeline of events was shared with the committee. Finally, the facility study and construction management topic. An agreement with Barton Mallow for services related to the next potential bond was discussed. Findings from the facility study will be presented at the March FFO meeting. The next FFO meeting will be March 6 at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarification. Can you tell the people what the Juul litigation is, or it's not something that we are active in, we're passive?
So it's a, John Scott, Terrence jumped in, it's a.
Class action.
Class action lawsuit of school districts throughout the country, bringing a suit against Juul, which was the producer of the, I think, the original vapes. And that, Mark, they were caught marketing to teens. And so the schools and the amount of time and resources spent in that felt like the lawsuit was coming forward. So there's a firm that is taking it, but true law has filed it for all the Michigan school districts and advised us to join that. It's coming, the judge is looking at a settlement, or has agreed to a settlement. And so it moved very quickly, and we all have to, as a board, accept or not accept in the next month this finding. And I attend a seminar on Thursday, excuse me, I think I'm losing my voice here, Thursday evening on what that will be to put on your agenda, either as a consent item, agenda item, or an action item, whatever Scott would desire at that night. My assumption is, because there's so many schools in it, it's not a large sum of funds, but there's probably some settlement for us in there.
Okay, thanks. As Mr. Lauterbach alluded to, we have a number of action items coming up, the first of which will be item 6.2. This is the paving bid, and I don't know if it's, Mr. Bruton?
I'll take that. Thank you, President McFerrin. We did accept bids for paving and provided you a tabulation. This is for work at the administration center, and also the maintenance and transportation grounds. We are recommending that we issue that purchase order to the low bidder, Pyramid Paving and Contracting of Bay City, Michigan, for a grand total of $437,685. And if approved this evening, Series 2 bond funds will be utilized for that project.
Okay, thank you. I will accept the motion regarding 6.2.
Make a motion to approve awarding the paving to Pyramid Paving and Contracting in Bay City for $437,685.
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding 6.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have item 6.3. This is the Bond Planning Agreement. Mr. Shero?
Yes, I think the minutes mentioned, we are at the timeline where we need to begin our next stage of our bond facility or facility studies. So we did this in 2013, 10 years ago. In doing so, we are looking at an opportunity at one spot to do a zero increase millage as well for some sum per our financial consultant. We are also, if you recall, 10 years ago, we talked about a 10 to 15-year lifespan of Northeast Middle School. So that would need to be looked at as well. So we need to get that going, and we need the expertise of our facility manager and construction manager, our architect and facility managers in order to put the agreement or those studies together. And so this, this agreement would be simply asking them to do so. They offer four different packages of compensation. One would cost you nothing if you decide not to pursue the financing to do the facility agreement. And the others give you a couple options. If you go forward and are unsuccessful, where it would be near nothing. Or if you go forward and decide not to use them, it would be near nothing. Or if you do use them and you are successful, there is a fee that they would collect for all their services and putting that together, the engineers and those who walk through the buildings. So the idea was to bring that together to our March, March board meeting, or March FFO board meeting. So we'd like that to be approved tonight.
Okay. I will accept the motion regarding item 6.3.
Make a motion to approve the Bond Planning Agreement, item 6.3.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Ms. Ringgold. Any additional discussion regarding item 6.3?
So I'm interested in knowing what this process looks like. I know we talked about it at FFO, but if you could provide a little bit more context.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the reasons I think we should use these two, they've been in our buildings for 10 years. And so they've walked side by side with our facility folks for over 10 years, with engineers throughout your buildings. So they bring quick expertise versus starting over. The sec, it really is that, walking the buildings, putting the back together, looking at the age of the buildings, pulling drawings, old documents together to see what we need. We know we went light on roofing. We know Northeast is an issue we need to talk about. When and where does that occur? We know our growth to the north towards Arken is an issue for our northern elementary schools. We know that our athletic facilities and art facilities lack. And so those are some of the items that they would study for you. They would bring you a very broad, high-topic conversation of all those items for you to pick and choose, and look at, and begin to go forward to talk to your community and say, would they, here's what our experts are saying, would you be willing to support one of these, some of these, none of these, going forward? The 2.95 mils per our financial consultant could be renewed and bring about $30 million in, and no increase to the taxpayers. Or you could ask for additional millages, because our 2.95 is the lowest millage you're going to find in the Great Lakes Bay region, if not even the entire state, to do some of the other projects going forward. So it's a time to look at short term, long term, and begin to have that conversation with them. So there's nothing more than them putting together, these are the items they see you need, here are some. need, here are some ballpark costs to those, and, you know, here are some options to go forward and discuss that with your community and see where to support us.
How does our mil, how does our 2.96 mils compare to, you said it's the lowest in the region?
Yeah.
What, some of the others?
Well, I'll give you an example. Meridian, one of our closest neighbors, is at the State Max, which I think is nine mil, eight or nine mils. And so, so when we went out in 2014, we were the lowest millage then I think we could find anywhere in the state to compare. So most districts always carry some debt. You know, it's just like, similar to having a home mortgage, and you get near the end, but you know you need to take some cash out to rebuild your bathrooms and kitchens. And so with the number of facilities you have and the age of them, where you are looking at some that should be offline over the next 20, 30 years, some that need to continue to upgrade because they're older, having probably some kind of millage and bond debt would be the norm.
So, Mike, this is to put together the needs assessment, rough ballpark. This does not commit us to using Barton Mallow for architectural engineering. It doesn't commit us to doing
And remember, Barton Mallow and French, they're both partnering on this. No, it does not. It has four specific options there for you on there. If you use them and you decide not to pursue, there's no cost. If you use them and you choose at that time not to choose them at construction manager architect, I think they ask, if you look at it, they ask for a $34,000 fee. If they continue to do work and you're unsuccessful, because there's more work in promoting your bond and unsuccessful, then they ask for a different fee. If you pass, continue, and you pass the millage, then they collect the normal fee on that, and they gave you a discount on that one as well, in their opinion.
But even if, even if we decide we want to go forward with a no increase bond, do work in the future, this does not commit us to doing
It absolutely does not commit you to do that at all. The idea is, these people have been in your building recently with expertise in your building, 10 years of expertise, they could probably present you the best data that you need right now to figure out what it is.
Mike, is the goal then to present that report next month or at the next board meeting?
Through FFO first, like we always do. FFO consensus is to bring it forward, we'll go forward. It's very broad, and it's lots of options. It would be lots of options. They do not, if you recall the previous one, I think the original one had $200 million in it, if you remember. We were, at that time, some people wanted two performing arts centers, and some people wanted, I don't know, there were some other things in there. And so as you went, we decided no, or building a brand-new school, which technically we didn't. We kind of came pretty close to that, but we used parts of the old Central Middle School within Central Park. We rebuilt the auditorium. So those are all things that you began, and we had used large user groups for two or three months of our community, and I would suggest you do that again. And as our audience wonderfully said tonight, I am a short timer. That date will someday be known, but it's not yet, and I have that right to do so. And so I won't be around for that, but I suggest you do the same thing. We had, I don't know, probably 10 meetings with user groups from inside employees to citizens in the community to hear their input about all of it, and then you decide to, how you want to move forward from there.
Barton Mallow facility, that's good.
Yeah, it's the same thing that they, one of the packages they provide is that service, as well as any promoting of the bond, they'll have marketing firms for you. And so each firm has their own way. That's one way, they're unique. Most of them don't provide those type of services. Actually, the marketing firm comes through French generally, it's a partnership that French has, so they're... But previously in your sinking funds, back then, you had Wolgast and a, the architect was a, do you know, A&amp;I out of UP?
It was ICI.
Thank you, Dave. ICI, out of there. At that time, the board chose to rebid that and go out, because we had some issues. If you recall, the second floor at Northeast was an issue of some of the constructions. Generally, what do you see generally in the statewide? You see switching construction managers and architects when you have an issue? Because it's hard to switch when they have expertise of your district. You start over.
I'm not opposed to the facility study. I'm absolutely the other on this spectrum. I think we very much need it. What I reflected on after the FFO meeting is the scope of what we might be talking about. These are potentially like, once in a generation, I mean, building a middle school is a, that's a generational thing. And, you know, there was, we had nine agenda items, you know, a lot of which, and there was a lot of discussion at FFO about the future needs of the district, and we could be going out to the taxpayers and asking for an extremely significant amount of money. And I want to make sure that we have the right, that we understand the process that we're taking, that we have the right professionals to assist us with the process. One of the things that the Barton Mallow proposal includes is looking at birth rate and future needs, you know, like projecting out, how many buildings do we need? Where do we need them? I don't know that a construction manager is the right consultant to help us with that process. I also don't know, I was a little put off by the fact that they already have loaded into their proposal a campaign consultant, and I'm not, they're not telling us who to use, but they're telling us as part of their proposal, they will use a campaign consultant for a bond campaign. That seems to me like we've got the cart way out in front of the horse, and we haven't really looked at the process. I think the renewal of the 2.95 is a relatively easy, I mean, there's obviously a timing issue with getting, with moving forward on that. But beyond that, I just, I'm not comfortable yet saying I'm ready to proceed with Barton Mallow as our consultant for this longer-term, long-range planning for our facilities needs. And I'd at least like to table this for a month.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, sure.
So facility study enrollment studies, absolutely, that's what construction managers do. That's the difference between a school construction manager and outside firm, and there's only a few that do all of that, because they do all of that. They walk you through treasury, they walk you through financing, they have expertise in those areas. And, you know, in our state, there's really two that excel at it. It's Clark and it's Barton Mallow. Barton Mallow is a top 50 named school construction managers in the entire nation, and there's a reason, because they provide those, all those extra services. And so are they the right people to do it? Absolutely. That's exactly who PFM, your financial manager would be telling you, is you want one of those construction firms that can provide those services. They're not getting out in front of, they're just telling you all the services they can provide if you choose them, and you do have a point to choose them after. You need a facility study in order to even talk about the 2.95. You don't go ask the people for something without saying, these are our needs, per experts in the field, and this is why we would go there. So we have to have a facility study.
Have we talked to Clark?
No, because we have those in there. We have these two experts in there.
Well, you said Barton Mallow and Clark, and as far as I can tell, we've only talked to Barton Mallow.
Correct. They're here, they've been doing it. It's our recommendation to use this firm. We have no reason not to. So if you choose not to, that's fine. I don't think that's the right recommendation going forward. I've done this, three of these, I've been doing this for 20 years, I'm providing you my expertise as you hire me to do.
Was it Barton Mallow that did the studies, one in 2014 for all the population?
Sure did, and we bid, we bid out at that time and interviewed, bid out, and we probably had nine proposals come back, a committee of Jerry Wasserman and Linda Klein, a couple of parents sat in it, and Barton Mallow and French were the two that, at that time, that we chose, and that was one of the reasons they provide a lot more services than some of the other ones.
So you've been through this three times. Were they with you all three times?
Two at times.
Okay. So in the capital needs planning agreement that we received
By the way, Brad, I won't be with them in the third one.
Right. Capital needs planning agreement. If the district decides to pursue a bond program and it is successful, this is under the compensation section of the letter. The district agrees to negotiate a formal agreement for construction management agency services that can be comfortably recommended to the Board of Education for approval. As part of this agreement, Barton Mallow will be reimbursed a total of $64,000 from the program proceeds for planning services in addition to the negotiated costs to provide construction management agency services. So I don't think anybody has a problem with $64,000. I don't think that's the problem. The problem is that this is running the lines of, we start down this path, we are not talking to anybody else, and we are saddling up $150 to $200 million with this group, and we haven't heard from other groups or from their competitors, whether it's Clark or Triangle or Spence, or have we ever reached out to the Three Rivers Corporation here within our own district to see if they would be interested in helping us pursue a large bond and/or performing research and/or construction management services? I think we need to slow this down a little bit. I think we need to have more due diligence. I think we are fiscally responsible for that $150 to $200 million that I would prefer to slow this down and do it right, and I would like to pick their top competitors and interview them and talk to them about these services, because, like I said, the $64,000 isn't the problem, but running with one proposal is a problem. We require three prices for everything else. We just talked about paving. We got something else in here about a wall that needs to be repaired. We really look hard and make sure that we get three proposals on everything that we do, and there's a lot of services that are offered in here, but the top three or four do all the same services.
Not the ones you mentioned. So, you know, Three Rivers, A, some of the other ones, you don't, they don't do schools, they don't do treasury, they don't
Clark and Triangle do.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. They do this.
Clark does.
And so does Triangle.
I said that, I don't know, you know who Triangle is, so, but, but those others don't do that. And we're not asking you about hundreds of millions down the road. We're asking for facility studies, because no one should even jump to that conclusion until it's brought to you and you have those discussions. You're looking for the dealer to diagnose your car, what it needs, and then to go out and have the discussion. Why are we doing this? Because these two are in your buildings right now, and you're just asking for their service to do that going forward. Yes, they are promoting themselves to go forward, but you should, you should and you can bid that project once you decide if you're going to do a bond out there, just as we did before. Look at the process exactly what we did before, because it was a wonderful process that we did before. No one's asking you to do any of those other things. And this is not about a company. This is about a service to get your facility studied by experts who know your buildings to bring it forward, to have the right data.
And we can disagree.
Well, absolutely. You can disagree. I'm just, I'm just recommending, as we all are behind the scenes, and that's what you pay us to do.
Also, in our FFO, it does not say administration recommends in these meeting minutes.
When we bring something to the board, it is
Every single line item in here says, administration will recommend purchase of semi-truck load of paper utilizing the REMC bid consortium pricing. Masonry repair, administration will recommend award of masonry repair project at Jefferson Middle School. Administration will recommend, administration will recommend. That does not say that in the FFO minutes. It was not recommended. We didn't talk about it. It was put up on the screen for about four seconds. I asked for a copy of it. We didn't get it until we had our Friday letter or
So Brad, be careful, because FFO, there is no asking for it to go forward. It's the administration
But it's talked about. All of these other line items were talked about in detail.
The minutes clearly said, we presented the facility plan in there, and we did. The administration recommendations is the board agenda. We are recommending that we enter into this, ask your approval to enter into this agreement, period, nothing more. From there, it is purely yours. We're giving you our recommendation and why. This is not about me. This is not about an argument. This is us presenting our recommendation. You got a motion, you got a second, I suggest you vote.
And I don't think that this board would be going into a long-term agreement
This is not a long-term agreement. This is a month or two.
When we have superintendent that is retiring. I think that we ought to talk to multiple firms.
Can I make a suggestion based on kind of what I'm hearing from everybody? So there's three sections in the Barton Mallow proposal. There's the facility assessment, there's the planning services, and then there's campaign support and focus groups. What I think I'm hearing everybody else say is that we're all in violent agreement that the facility assessment needs to be done. And we're, we have a lot of consternation about the second two paragraphs, second two sections of this proposal.
Sort of.
Is that fair?
The concern that I have, Phil, is at some point the board is going to be out in the community. I think what we're going to find when this is done is that we need significant investment in our facilities. And we're going to be out making a recommendation to the community or asking the community to support that based on a recommendation from somebody who has a horse in the race. Barton Mallow is the existing construction manager. They will have an inside lane to the future work, and they're the ones making the recommendation about the facility. And they, that is, to me, is a bad look. That's, I just think we should, as Brad said, get some other, they may be the best deal in town, but I don't know, because we haven't talked to anybody.
Agreed.
If they really are the best deal, I'm all for it. And what I said earlier was, I'd like to table this for 30 days to just understand, are we going down the right path? Are they going to give us an objective assessment? And if so, I'm all for it. I just don't know, as I sit here right now, if that's
Who's going to gauge whether they're going to give us an objective assessment?
I think we could talk to other industry professionals who could say, this is what you need, this is who you should engage to undertake this process. They may not be, Three Rivers, for example, may not do this kind of work, but they know the questions to ask. And I don't know that we know the, I can tell you, I don't know the questions to ask as I sit here right now.
The questions to ask of the individual firms?
Correct. We vote on it.
But we're in agreement that we need to have that assessed.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And there's a time component, if I understand that correctly, right?
Yeah, if you delay this, we won't, we won't be able to get to treasury like you would like to, especially starting over with somebody else. I mean, it's really, the bottom line is, if you don't use your in-house expert at this point moving forward, then you're probably delayed six months or a year, year or somewhere, because you've got to bring someone in who knows nothing, know anything about your facilities all and start all over with everybody. There's a lot of work to get them up to speed by your, Mike Mogulberg, walking the facilities and trying to teach them and get drawings and all the pieces that these two firms have going forward. I mean, these are, these are two of the best firms and absolutely in the state of Michigan in school work, and they've absolutely performed for us. They're here, why not use them to get the assessment so you can go forward instead of starting over?
I don't have a problem with paying them
There isn't a school district in the world that wouldn't use their current construction manager, architect to get that done.
Everything, everything since he finished talking is opinion.
Excuse me?
I said, everything since John stopped talking, you have valid points, but those are opinions. If there is a $150, $200 million carrot out there, there could be another firm that could get it done in terms of our timeframe of what we need.
Well, it's actually impossible to start all over.
We're, I think we have to be careful. We're talking about
You have then through a treasury and what you have to take to treasury and enrollment studies and all the pieces that have to be done in order to do that.
I think we have to be careful. We're talking about, this was specifically an assessment of what the district needs. One of the things Mike talked about early on was no increase millage that would generate about $30 million in revenue. It's significantly different than what you're talking about. We may have to do both, but $150, $200 million is much further down the pipeline than this.
And we've been talking about them bringing this presentation for months, and you, and both of you sat on, all three of you sat on FFO for months.
Right, but I didn't have a contract to sign to get it.
So, well, at some point, you have to have one. And so for months, we've been talking
We never authorized this contract, ever.
No, you're here tonight to authorize this entry. That's exactly right.
You can't.
You can't authorize anything for this.
So anything that went, that has already gone on, we haven't authorized it.
What has gone on that we haven't authorized?
You are telling us that this is almost ready to be presented.
We've been talking about having a facility assessment and Barton Mallow, them working on it and coming forward, and you've been asking, you specifically have been asking, what month is that going to occur? So suddenly, tonight, we're going in a different direction on that. So you can, absolutely, you've entered into nothing. It's just quite a shock and surprise that we've been working on this behind the scenes for, I think, probably six months if you look back at your Friday letter and your FFO meetings. This is no shock, no surprise. So as a superintendent, absolutely, it's astounding that we're here tonight.
What makes it different for me is when I realized after the February sixth meeting that we may be talking about a lot more than a hundred and fifty million dollars. We may be talking about a lot more than one middle school. And the scope of it is beyond what I had previously understood. It's not just an assessment of our existing facilities and upgrades. It is potentially a new elementary school, buying property in Larkin Township or somewhere, building a new middle school, looking at enrollment projections and all, all of, and everything else that that means, which could mean closing buildings.
None of that, none of that occurs in this just...
Then why is that in this engagement letter? Why is it in here?
Because if you, because they're saying they provide that you to that. If you go, if you decide to go out, they're providing you, this is what a ballpark elementary of four hundred and fifty kids costs, this is ballpark what a middle school would cost. Your current state of your middle school is this, and this is what it needs to improve in. Northeast, we want it to keep it going for fifteen more years. It's going to cost you about approximately, this is what, this is our expertise of what we see. We see that you have a hundred and fifty roofs in the district and fifty of them are going to be replaced in the next five years. And here's the ballpark estimate cost, and it's all yours from there. They do nothing. When they don't make any recommendations, they don't bring any of that piece. That is what, what, if you decide to go forward, they will go in and do it and have expertise in it. They're bringing only, they walk your buildings, here's what they see you need. If you decided, here's about what ballparks were, and you would have all those options for it. It's all they're doing. There is no commitment beyond that.
And anybody...
We could take that to bid. We could take that report and say, "This is our..."
This is our RFP.
And, and, and John, you could say, "We're going to go out for approximately this many
mills and approximately this many dollars, and we're going to bid construction managers and architects," which is what we did in two thousand thirteen.
Well, and anybody who's going to come do the facilities assessment is going to have skin in the game. Anybody who's walking through the buildings and looking at them is going to go like, "Yay!"
Not if they agree to never bid on the construction management, not if they say, "Pay me the sixty-four and I'll do this for you, and I promise I won't bid."
Yeah.
That I could live with.
And you're not going to have that.
Well...
With school expertise.
Not at all.
I, I'm just going to make a simple comment here.
I do, because I've been doing it my entire career. It's what, what, what you pay me as a professional to know and do.
I was in on this from the beginning, from the last bond, and I don't know that anybody else was. Am I correct?
I was.
You, Scott. Okay, I lose, I lose track. And I remember doing this, and they did a, just for my comments, they did a marvelous job. It was specific, 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 I mean, but that was it. And as Mike alluded to, our staff, like Mogulberg and anybody else that's involved with that, to have them start all over and get somebody, and we're talking just this exact, they're saying, just to go through, just like if I had somebody come into my house and say, "Okay, this is what you need," but there's no commitment to that. So personally, I have no issue with using someone that knows our facility.
Ten years.
And they've been working with it, and they are amazing, amazing. I mean, I've met, I've seen, I've walked through the whole thing from beginning to end. To start all over, I understand what you're saying in the bid process after, but why do we want to start from scratch with somebody that we don't even know? That, that's just my opinion. They have been wonderful and people that I have met...
And it more important that they don't know anything about our buildings or district.
No.
And when you bid, they bid their fee, they bid their services, they provide your service plan, all those things. I absolutely would go ahead and bid that. This, the, starting from zero is not, not the norm, nor would it be the recommendation by anybody.
All right.
But, let's discuss it.
Are we ready to move forward and vote? All right. Regarding item six point three, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
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 Motion carries. All right, thank you. Appreciate the discussion on both sides. We welcome Brad and John. John?
Excellent.
Okay, next action item is six point four, EnviroClean Custodial Services Contact or Contract or No?
Thank you. Yep, the district has been contracting our custodial services since two thousand and seven, and we have been with EnviroClean since the fourteen, fifteen school year. We are recommending this evening that we extend our current contract for an additional two years for an annual cost of, I'll try and get the numbers perfect here for you, two million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents in the first year of the contract, two million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-six cents in the second year of the contract. And those numbers represent an annual three percent wage increase for the staff.
Make a motion to approve item six point four for custodial services to Enviro, EnviroClean.
All support. Motion by Mr. Rauch, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding item six point four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have item six point five. This is the Jefferson wall repair bid. Ms. Brute?
Thank you. We are in need of some masonry repair over at Jeffersons. You saw in the pictures and the board packet that was provided to you. We did accept bids for that project, and we are recommending that we issue a purchase order for this project to National Restoration of Milford, Michigan for forty-two thousand dollars. And if approved this evening, capital projects funds will be utilized for this project.
Okay, thank you. I'll accept the motion for item six point five.
I'll make a motion that we accept item six point five, Jefferson, accept the Jefferson wall repair bid of forty-two thousand dollars for National Restoration.
Support. Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Rauch. Any discussion regarding six point five?
I think we really need to do a better job of engaging our local people. I know that we advertise for our work when, when we have something like this. I think that our district needs to reach out to people, and we are handling things ourselves, to reach out to people to let them know that these types of things are out there to be bid. They may not be watching the newspaper or looking at the webpage, and this is masonry. It is very common. We have some phenomenal contractors in this area that perform these services. And the three bidders were ninety to a hundred and twenty miles away. And I think that we really need to try to engage with our local people to see if they'd be interested in participating on this because maybe they're not watching those services. And maybe it's not something that we do internally that branches out like the construction manager contact, contact list does of getting opportunities out there. So Davenport's, Holt, Michigan, National Restoration, who we're awarding to is Milford, which is a hundred and five miles, Holt's ninety miles, Ram Services is a hundred and twenty miles. I think we need to do better on that. I'd like, like to encourage things that we're bidding out to try to get some more involvement from our local companies.
And in defense of our people who do that, it's one person, and he probably doesn't have those connections. So hence, having a construction manager analysis, not a bad thing to have. But that's, Mike bids it out on those items because that's all he, he knows to do, Brad. He probably does not know masons very well.
Okay.
Electricians, you know, he calls you guys and asks you. Masons, I'm sure he doesn't have that connection.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a paper order. Mr. Brute?
Thank you. We are seeking your approval this evening to issue a purchase order to the Central Michigan Paper Company of Ada, Michigan for thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. This order will provide a semi-truck load full of paper, which, for your information, is eight hundred and forty cases at thirty-six dollars and fifty cents per case. This pricing is procured through the REMC Safe Bidding Consortium and does follow board policy.
And to be clear, this is item six point six. I will accept the motion for the same.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of paper under item six point six.
Motion by Mr. Rauch, support by Ms. Baker. Any additional discussion regarding six point six? All in favor?
Are there any other opportunities that some of these base items are going through a program of bidding? We had a little bit of discussion with, to ask some of the other humongous entities in our area, the Dow Chemicals, the DuPonts, the Mid-Michigan Health, the Northwoods, how they're purchasing paper to see, maybe there's a, an opportunity to partner with a local partner that maybe we could save some dollars to get a semi-load. Because we do it, how many times? Three?
Yeah, yeah, and you could, Brad, but I would tell you, this is a statewide school bid. So you're talking about purchasing power, there's a whole bunch there, and that's why the REMC exist just for that reason. Date what the REMC stand for, but that's what they do. They do statewide bidding for schools in order to get you the best price. That's why...
And I'm sure it is a good price. I think Dow buys stuff pretty well, do you? Or DuPont or Cortever?
My, based on my son's Friday folder, I would guess that we buy more paper than any of the companies you name.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have item six point seven. This is gifts totaling fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. Mr. Brute?
Thank you. We seek your approval this evening to accept eight gifts totaling fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. Six of those gifts come from the Midland High Sports Boosters for various items, the other two support culture and climate initiatives and also the EPA and DECA expenses. We appreciate your approval to be able to accept these generous gifts.
Make a motion to approve gifts totaling fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars in item six point seven.
All support. Motion by Mr. Rauch, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any discussion regarding six point seven? Thank you very much to those donors. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, six point seven passes. Thank you. And I think that's it. We are now, information on six point eight. Brian?
Yep, we wish to extend our gratitude to the donors for the thirty-three separate gifts that you see listed in the agenda. They represent a large range of items from supports for athletic teams, student clubs, and food service scholarships. Per tradition, all donors will be recognized in board correspondence and in broadcast credits this evening. We again appreciate their generosity.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we are at item seven on our agenda, Human Resources. Minutes will be read by Mr. Rauch.
Yep. So the committee met on February tenth in the Administration Center. Item number one was retirement review. Twenty-seven staff members, including nineteen of which are teachers, submitted early retirement notices. Several teaching jobs have been posted aligned to predicted areas of need for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year already. Item number two, reviewed staffing process. Key staffing dates were shared with committee. Collaborative meetings with building administrators will begin in March to review that process. Item number three, we talked about recruiting. Scheduled external recruiting events include Wayne State University, Michigan State, Saginaw Valley State, Central Michigan, Eastern Michigan, and Howard University. Midland Pope Schools is also hosting a countywide job fair on Saturday, April fifteenth. Item number four was an update on paraprofessional negotiations. The committee was briefed on the status of negotiations with the Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals. Two sessions have been held. Meetings are scheduled to occur bi-weekly with that group. Then item number five was semester one attendance data. Statistics related to teacher attendance during the first semester of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year were presented to the committee. Data has also been shared with MCA leadership and MPS Administrative Council. Our next HR committee is Friday, April fourteenth at two P.M.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, item seven point two is information only. This is a list of retirements. Mr. Jaster?
Thank you. Before I go through this lengthy list, I'll just remind everybody again that employee deadline for early retirement notice is February first, so it's typical to have a long list of retiring employees in, in the February board meeting. So just to make sure all are recognized, I'm going to go through this, but try to do it as quickly as I can. So first, note that the teacher group, their effective dates for retirement are June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and so I'll begin with Holly Anderson at Woodcrest Elementary, Richard Blasey Jr., Dow High School, Kelly Brewer, Northeast Middle School, Kenneth Candela, the, the agenda lists Dow High School, but I know he is at Northeast, so I believe there was a typo there. Tina DeLonge, Seabird Elementary and Northeast Middle School, Brent Doty, Jefferson Middle School, Lori Feinauer, Midland High School, Lori Hedrick, teacher at our post-secondary program, Callan Jacobs, Jefferson Middle School, Lori Kraut, Adams Elementary, Esther Lopez Bateman, Jefferson Middle School, Carlos McGee, Jefferson Middle School, Don Multhrip Brady, H.H. Dow High School, Amy Newton, Adams Elementary, Carrie Salget, H.H. Dow High School, Michelle Chapansky, Seabird Elementary, Brian Smith, H.H. Dow, and also Jefferson Middle School, Jody View, Northeast Middle School, Diane White, H.H. Dow High School. Our next group is our paraprofessionals who have announced retirements, and those are effective June first. First is Julian Horemsky, also at the post-secondary program, Judith Knopick, H.H. Dow High School, Cindy Tempest, Woodcrest Elementary, Diane Wanis, ESL Tutor, and multiple buildings for the district. Then we have some other employees, a combination of directors and OPAAs. First, Karen Droule, Midland High School, her retirement will be effective March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Rita Klump, here at the Administration Center, her retirement will be effective June thirtieth. Tracy Reed, here at the Administration Center, her retirement will be effective June thirtieth. Then Pam Sharrow, pre-primary center director, also effective June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you to everybody who is retiring for all of their years of service. It's going to be big shoes to fill, but we wish them all well in whatever chapter of life they choose to go. Next up, we have item eight, eight point one, is information only, is letters to and from the board. The letters to the Board of Education from the individuals listed on the agenda under item eight point one. Eight point two is letters from the Board of Education to a number of individuals and entities, all of which are listed under eight point two in the agenda.
I have a question.
Yes.
About eight point one, the letters to the board from Paul Phillips, gentleman. He's asking for individual teacher, of teacher information, if his name, if the teacher, what building they're in, and what subjects they teach. Do we know what that's for? It says it's for non-commercial purposes.
Yeah.
I haven't been able to figure out. I've seen his name...
It's a good question.
Looking for this information across the country, but I, I'd like to know what it's for.
I'm going to ask Brian because he tends to oversee the FOIAs, but I'm not sure I know.
Yeah, Director, Human Resources, Karen Justin is taking over FOIAs. I'll have to check in with her and see what she's found out.
Because it seems awful, you know, intrusive. I mean, I recognize that we are a public school, but understanding names of teachers, grades, and whatnot.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Item nine, nine point one, is a list of the regular and special meetings of the Board of Education beginning at seven P.M. here at the Administration Center. Those are the remaining meetings for twenty-twenty-three. Again, note that April seventeenth is a budget workshop beginning at six-thirty P.M., followed immediately after by our regular scheduled meeting. Next item, ten point one, are there any points of clarification on topics discussed tonight before I turn the floor over to Mr. Sharrow?
I just wanted to say, um, thank you to the students who wrote to us, that, that, you know, in the letters, of correspondence, that we got letters from five students from government classes and things like that. It was really, they were really thoughtful. Um, and also thank you to those of you that came to speak tonight. Thank you for sharing your experience with us, your U I D.
We absolutely need to do better than that.
Okay, Mike?
I'm going to be really brief. So sadly, we're still talking about school safety, um, and it's heightened awareness after our state's been through again. I just want to call recognition that we're, we are continuing to move our processes along. The safety audit has been done with Midland P D concluded, um, talked with our administrators. And as budget season comes, our administrators will bring some needs forward that we'll begin to address that M P D saw, thought, mostly small stuff, but some things that we can try to improve in, um, some infrastructure in the buildings. Along with that, there was, um, state dollars for a mapping. Jeff, jump in if I say this wrong, but a mapping program to have all our buildings mapped more for emergency responders versus our, what we use. And so this is kind of like a three-D mapping of all of our buildings for the responders to be able to respond more quickly if you have an incident. Good enough?
Yeah, I would just add that we expect those drafts to be coming soon, and our principals are going to walk buildings, um, with those drafts in hand and make sure that all the details are in, you know, correct locations. Because we have shared with, with the company some of our CAD drawings, but they're going into fine detail, like where AEDs are, if you have Epi pens in the office. I mean, they're putting everything on there that you can think of in addition to the numbered entrances and things that first responders would, would need to know. Yeah.
Then, um, this, the governor's budget, which I assume most of the legislators would be approval of, has a large safety item again. And so, you know, we've been wanting to add the Zero Eyes technology onto our camera systems along similar A I, um, platforms that are being used all over for weapons detection are available for your cameras. And if you listen to the aftermath of MSU, one of the issues they talked about is their camera system. And it, they have a hodgepodge of them. We're very fortunate that the bond brought us in the Vigilon, um, and we're all on the same system, three-hundred fifty, four-hundred cameras. We're going to get up to maybe four-fifty, five-hundred. And so the power of adding that A I technology on to detect, um, a weapon, particularly on the outside of buildings where they get in, is pretty powerful. And so we really want this bad. Penny's been trying to work with one of our funders in town on that grant. Hopefully we'll get that, but if not, I think next year's budget may allow us to do that. But, um, we certainly can have other items that we can address with that budget as well. In that budget, which more importantly than just hardening, is mental wellness again in there. It's a continued growth in the mental wellness side. As we saw, this individual certainly had those issues. And so that'll be a big piece in there. So we're pretty excited about that part of the budget. That's all I have.
Okay. That brings us to the end. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rauch?
Support.
Support by Ms. Ringel. Any opposed? Okay.